We'll call the February seventeenth Apopka City Council meeting to order. With us today, we have Emily Powell from Wicava is going to do the pledge. We have Matty Byrd and Trinity Eckert from Piedmont Lakes going to do the pledge. And then Pastor Smith or Commissioner Smith will do the invocation. So come on up and give us the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
February is Black History Month, an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans at a time for recognizing their essential role in the U.S. history. The origins of Black History Month began in nineteen fifteen with historian Carter G. Woodson and Minister Jesse E. Muirland.
That year, they founded the Association for Study of Negro Life and History, an association dedicated to researching and promoting achievements by Black Americans. The association, the organization later became known as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. In nineteen twenty-nine, the association started the national birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass as a week to commemorate achievements by the African American community.
Through the efforts of Woodson and Muirland, schools, communities, and colleges organized local celebrations as well as history clubs and performances. In the decades following this historic week, the event grew and evolved into what eventually came, became known as Black History Month. In nineteen seventy-six, President Ford officially recognized Black History Month, and since then, every American president has designated February as Black History Month with a specific theme. For 2021, the theme is Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity.
Okay, the minutes, any changes, corrections? If not, look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankston, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda review. Edward, any changes?
No, Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Proclamation. It's FFA Week here, and I think we've got a few schools represented here. We've got Apopka High School, Apopka Middle School, Wicava High School, Piedmont Middle Lake Middle School, Wolf Lake Middle School, Windermere High School, and Okowi Middle School here with us tonight. So thank you all for coming out. And with that, I want to read the proclamation. What we'll do is after we get, I read the proclamation, we'll have each school come up, we'll get a picture with the commissioners, and each school by themselves, and then you can, you can exit. That'd be great, awesome. Okay, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Future Farmers of America, FFA, and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and future of the food, fiber, and natural resources systems, and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education and the FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demand in the science, business, and technology of agricultural education, and whereas the FFA motto, 'Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve,' gives direction and purpose to those students who take an active role in making the connection to agricultural education, and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation, and whereas FFA chapters have been very active in Apopka and have made many contributions to school and community life, now therefore I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim February twentieth through February twenty-seventh, twenty-one, to be Future Farmers of America Week." Thank you. And before we get the picture, I know Commissioner Smith with a few years of experience in this department, I thought might want to say a few words.
I'd just like to say that it is an honor to have the FFA chapters from this area here in our chamber, and having been a FFA advisor for forty years is indeed an honor. And we know that it is a fact that agricultural classes along with the FFA advisors makes a difference in the lives of our young people as they continue to grow and advance and become productive citizens in these United States. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and start with Apopka High School. Students and the teachers come down up front. Next stop, Apopka Middle. Wicava High School? Piedmont Middle School? Wolf Lake Middle School? Windermere High School? Okay, Okowi Middle School?
Well, hello, everyone. I just want to take a second and thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak on behalf of the organization I represent and also to kick off this amazing week. Now, FFA Week started back in nineteen forty-eight. It encompasses George Washington's birthday, and also gives a chance for FFA chapters across the country to not only celebrate, but learn a little bit about the history of the amazing organization they're part of. Now, FFA works on growing tomorrow's agricultural leaders today. Started back in nineteen forty-five, or nineteen twenty-five, when four Virginia Tech agricultural teachers decided that they wanted to start the Future Farmers of Virginia. And since then, it has grown to a nationwide organization that spans across the country and has over seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand members. So I invite you all to celebrate with us and join us in National FFA Week. I would also like to thank the City of Apopka City Council for letting us come out here and be here for the proclamation. Thank you all so much, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
Awesome. Great to have our youth here.
Yes.
All right, public comment. Susan, you got any cards?
Rod Olson.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Hello, Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. I wanted to thank you all personally for Saturday Night Sounds. It's been an awesome experience. I've only missed one. The mayor and his lovely wife, I've seen it everyone so far. The food's been great when they've had it there. It's a wonderful opportunity to get together, and the venue is just tremendous. And Mayor, I wanted to thank you personally. After I talked to you three weeks ago about improving the weather, you delivered twice, hopefully the next one. Thank you.
I had to make a change in, I had to make a change in the staff out there. And so, yeah, I was out there, and we took a picture with, Jill was on duty that night, and took a picture with the sun behind her, go, you all, the rest of you are fired. I've got, I've got my weather girl right now, so. So anyway, thank you, thank you, Rod.
All right, we have Gary Childers.
Dear Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, my family and I would like to give a heartfelt thanks to the city planners who recently diligently and vigilantly upheld their duty to the citizens of Rock Springs Ridge by turning down a proposal that would have desecrated the beauty of our beloved community. We realize all too well that the fight is not yet over. However, we continue to have faith in our trusted and esteemed city leaders, mayor, planning city, planning committee members, and council commissioners to protect us. You are our only line of defense for protecting our beautiful community, our home. Thank you, my family and I appreciate your value and value your aegis over us. Again, for the record, we want no rezoning, no amendment to the land use of the former golf course in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, citizens. I'm David Hoffman. I live at thirty-six ten Tayside Court, Rock Springs Ridge. A nexus of conflict in a American city over the issue of development versus conservation is property rights. That is, those with much property should be afforded the right and privilege to do with that property as they wish. This mantra forwards the idea of unfettered rights in name of freedom and liberty. However, if we measure our nation's history, a counter-narrative must be offered. Indeed, absolute property rights have always been attenuated and contested. To be fair, we must recognize that our founding fathers placed much stock in property since they enshrined in our early republic framework the idea that only citizens who could vote were white men who possessed property. Thankfully, that restricted suffrage has been expanded in fits and starts, although to this day, we struggle to guarantee the right to vote to all eligible citizens. Obviously, over time, there have evolved various restrictions and delineations affecting land use. Most prominent and deeply embedded in the layout of our communities have been zoning, ordinance, and code restrictions, which can be seen as protective barriers to show, to allow communities and neighborhoods to sustain their identity, value, and quality of life. In essence, we must remember that my unfettered property right, as I champion it, could be my neighbor's curse. No, we do not have license to do exactly as we wish with our property, nor should we. As we turn our attention to Rock Springs Ridge, we have at the vortex of our community dilemma an assertion by the golf course owners that their prerogatives to further develop their property should trump the wishes of thirteen-hundred-and-twenty homeowners to protect the value of their homes, the identity and life quality that they purchased and subscribe to. We residents believe that our property prerogatives must prevail. When they purchased the golf course property and began to operate it in two thousand and five, the golf course owners surely must have known about the land use restrictions in play vis-à-vis the PUD, that is, the rules in play. Now they are bidding to change the rules and subject Rock Springs Ridge homeowners to a zero-sum game whereby we end up with less so that they can have substantially more, that is, we lose while they win. On this level of consideration, the strength of our position is not debatable. We have an airtight case. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
We have Francisco Hernandez.
Good evening. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Francisco Hernandez from Country Adders, Apopka. Let's see, I come to you tonight to applaud the idea of buying Camp Weewa. This area alone, Vineyard and Boy Scout Row is growing, and I believe residents now and later will grateful welcome this green space area. I am the vice president of Country Adders Homeowners Association of Lakeview Row in a city neighborhood located in southeastern Apopka. We do not have any parks nearby. And by the way, I'm sorry, I forgot to give you this.
Thank you.
If you look at the little square... That's basically what I came to talk to you guys. The closest park will be Wilson Park. We're going to talk a little bit in there. According to the research from smart city organizations, they found districts neighborhoods where vacant lots have been repurposed into green spaces experience, reduce crime, less stress for residents, better mental and physical health, and higher property values. As a professional living in southeastern, southeastern portion of the city and working as a licensed real estate agent, I can tell your neighborhood here are losing value. Additional, our schools have lower grades than the rest of Apopka, which is one of the reasons why myself, my wife, and myself drive our childrens to magnet schools in downtown Orlando. Our neighborhood in southeastern Apopka are looking more and more stressed, and we need, we need you to partner with us on improving, on improvement before it is too late. I believe a pocket park is what we need in Apopka to improve the entire southeastern portion of the city. Pocket parks, according to Smart City, raise property values and add future revenues to the city. If you look at this picture, the one I'm showing you right there, and you look at the little square, the closest park to us is Alonso Williams Park, which is three miles away. If you look at all the other red dots, you will see that they are farther away. Southeastern Apopka, our community truly needs, and deserve its own pocket park. It will lead to improved home values, safer and more friendly neighborhoods, improved fitness and health outcome, higher performance school, and residents who will become more engaged with our city, Apopka. So I have a solution. I'm not just complaining. My solution is for the city of Apopka to purchase the property that just came up at the corner of Lakeview Row in Apopka Boulevard, which resides within the city and built, and built a park. It doesn't even have to be fancy. That's where the little square is at. I took the delivery to contact the agents. I have spoke to them. There is two properties in there, they're together, okay? They are not, we're not talking about five million dollars, three million dollars, two million dollars. They are under two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, I do understand purchasing Camp Weewa is already strange for the current city budget, but I also know this consult values, equity, and fairness. My neighbors, and I understand if the city can only buy the land for the park at this time, we will be satisfied its construction will be placed on a five-year budgetary plan. I and the community stand ready to assist and respectfully ask the council to consider this worthy solution to provide equity, fairness, and beautiful little park for southeastern Apopka like we see elsewhere in the city. Again, I cannot emphasize that if you look around in the map that I show you, there is no land to build a park. If you look, the six property, the six lots that are for sale, they start at three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars all the way to one-point-two-million dollars, and you cannot do anything in there because you have houses right next to it. That lot right there, it have no neighbors on there that the community is right there, so it will be perfect. And might be gone within the next thirty days to six months, but if you look at where it's located, we might not have this opportunity again for the next ten, fifty, or a hundred years because there is no more land in that area to build anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody else, Susan?
I don't have any more.
Okay.
Were you gonna, you did a white one? Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Karen Settle?
Good evening. My name's Karen Settle. I live in Piedmont Park subdivision on Grassmere Drive. I'm actually the HOA president there. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I appreciate your time tonight. First off, I'd like to comment on what Mr. Hernandez says regarding that piece of property there at the corner. I too agree that we could use a nice little park there. We're concerned that there might be a god-awful convenience store go in there, and we have plenty of stores with Walmart and Sam's and all that type of thing. So I concur on what he's referring to. Earlier today, I don't know if everyone received it because I did get it out a little bit later. I sent everyone an email. Did anybody get a chance to look at it? Okay, good.
Yeah, our internet was down around here this afternoon, so it was...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was a little bit late, I'm sorry, I was a little busy. But what I wanted to tell you was, Mr. Mayor, I was in attendance at the concert on Saturday night. What a lovely concert that was, I really enjoyed it, loved the, and the venue out there is beautiful, which really kind of got my wheels spinning yet again. Over the past ten years, I've lived in Piedmont Park since two thousand and one. I've been the president there for at least ten years, I don't even know anymore. But we have these islands that are, were built as part of that subdivision, and they are horrendous. They are very narrow. As you can see in the photos that I attached to the email in the interest of time this evening, they're falling apart. The trucks have run over them so many times, and basically, our neighborhood just looks awful. The people that live on those streets are begging the HOA to fix those. We can't fix those. We don't have the money to fix those. We are doing everything in our power to improve our neighborhood. Our annual dues, the income that we get from our dues is only fifty-four thousand dollars a year. We have very, very low dues. We don't have the ability to raise them at this time. Two years ago, we spent sixteen thousand dollars out of our own money to re, whatever you do, refresh a retention pond. It had to be dug out because it hadn't been touched in twenty years. Four years ago, we put a thirty-thousand-dollar playground inside our subdivision with the help of Orange County Neighborhood Grants. We're currently working with Orange County Grants to install lighting and landscaping at our interest on Apopka Boulevard. All of these things are within our, our wheelhouse to be able to accomplish. The deteriorating road, Armando Borjas Road, and I apologize if I mess correct that name, and those traffic islands within our neighborhood are something that are not within our budget, not within our, our wheelhouse. I've come to the city on numerous occasions in the past ten years to the road department, and every single time they've said, oh, we don't have money for that. Well, I know you guys just got some, like a little bit of a windfall from Duke Energy, so I served, you know, you got some extra money, so maybe you could kind of keep us in mind.
Well, do me a favor, that guy right back there with the coat and tie and the black mask.
Which one?
He's gonna, he's gonna give you, no, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly. He, he's our public works director, and he'll give you his card.
Yes, sir.
And we'll have him or, or his Paul Hathaway, who is the, our streets guy, come out and take a look at those, another Borjas Road. Now, I'll tell you, on the roads right now, we're, we're in the middle of doing a road survey to look at all our roads and figure out, because we can't, if everybody complains about their road.
Right.
So what we're going to do is we're going to go across the city and figure out which we're going, we're going to prioritize roads based on a unbiased, you know, consultant. But as far as those other things, I think Jeff Weatherford will, you know, he'll, he'll either come out or send one of his guys out, take a look at your, at those islands and see, you know, what we can do to help you. Okay?
Yeah, if we could just get on the list and get some attention, that'd be wonderful.
And if he doesn't take care of you, let me know, okay?
I got your email, I certainly will.
And Jeff better, because Karen is a FIS colleague of mine, so you better cheater right.
No pressure, Jeff. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you.
That's it.
And it? Okay. All right, consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? Not look for motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Pam?
Good evening. I am here to talk about an agreement. This is a request to approve an agreement with Adventist Health Systems to exchange property so that we can construct Harmon Road. In this graphic, you can see.
And?
Oh.
And a fire station.
Oh, and a fire station, I'm sorry, and Fire Station Six. I'm so sorry.
Boy, just left you out of there, chief.
Um, let's see, are we on here? Okay, so this property right here, and this property, and this property are owned by Adventist Health. This is our property, and then these two little pieces down here, and this is the old Akoya Apopka Road that Orange County deeded to us when they, so we own that free and clear. It's just, it's just property. So what we've proposed is we're going to give them all this, they're going to give us this piece, which you can see the road right of way here, or the proposed alignment, and we'll use this property for the road and ponds. And then what this gives them is a nice big 12-point-something acre piece that they can develop, and they'll have access on Akoya Apopka, and we'll give them access on Harmon if we can, too. So Tim Clark and Rebecca Heard were nice enough to come tonight, so I thought I'd ask them up.
Sure.
They can tell y'all if I'm lying or telling the truth about this.
Thank you. Mayor, Commissioners. So, yeah, we believe this to benefit both parties. Clearly, as you look at the map there, we've, you guys own a piece of land that goes straight through the middle of our land, which makes that really hard to develop on for us. And then, as you guys, as we're looking at Harmon Road and the extension of that, we know the importance of that to the city and the importance of that to us as well, and we know the need for the fire station for the community as well that we believe benefits you all and the city as we're growing and expanding in this market. So we believe it's a benefit for both, although in this exchange, we actually give up a little bit of land, but we believe the benefit for both outweighs that, so that we have developable land in the future. Thank you.
Well, I have to admit there, Mr. Clark, that I made a bet with my good friend there, Pam Richmond, about how fast Advent could get this agreement done, and so I owe not only one lunch, but I owe her two lunches, because Advent came through in a hurry, which was awesome. So thank you.
Usually it takes a lot longer. We got it done.
If you'd just waited two weeks, I could have won the bet.
A little more communication, Mayor, a little more communication.
So anyway, any questions for Pam on the agreement?
You showed us the road and the retention ponds, and where would the fire station go?
Um, oh, it's not shown on this particular graphic, but it's going to go right there. I think originally we had planned it somewhere over here, but I think it fits nicer right here, and they're happy with it in that location. The signals, they'll have something at their fire station that will print here, so when they're come, when they come flying out of there, the signal that we're going to install as part of this project at Akoya Apopka and Harmon will give them the green so they can get to where they need to go.
And what's really interesting about, you know, where the temporary fire station is, which is on the backside of the hospital, I know that the chief has got these unbelievable GIS mapping on calls and timing, and this saves us like 30 seconds, you know, on the overall, you know, trips that we'd come out of here, that would save us 30 seconds over having it where it is currently. So it's amazing that, you know, so not only does it work for us, it even, you know, saves 30 seconds off of our normal timing across all the calls we'd make out of that Station Six. So it's a great, it's a win-win for everybody. So, and thank you, Pam, thanks for pulling this all together and taking me to lunch, or me taking you to lunch, whatever, how that works. Okay. With that, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Any questions, anybody, everybody good? If not?
Good trade.
Look for a motion to approve, let's see, a motion to authorize the city administrator to approve the real property exchange agreement with Adventist Health, Sunbelt, Inc., to acquire the property needed to construct the Harmon Road extension and Fire Station Six.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
They should all be like this.
Thank you. All right, ordinance number 2802.
Ordinance number 2802. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensia Plan of the city of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from mixed use to industrial for certain real property generally located north of Hogshead Road and west of Hermit Smith Road, owned by Corey Holdings One LLC, comprising 11.94 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2802.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2803.
Ordinance number 2803. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from MUESGT, Mixed Use Eastshore Gateway Subdistrict, to IL, Light Industrial District, for certain real property located north of Hogshead Road and west of Hermit Smith Road, comprising 11.94 acres more or less, and owned by Corey Holdings One LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2803.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2811.
Ordinance number 2811. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from Transitional T to Residential Country Estate, RCE, for certain real property located at 1228 Usler Road, comprising 5.06 acres more or less, and owned by Alberto Esteban, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Bobby, any changes? Okay, anybody from publish, public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2811.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up. Who's taking this? Bobby, you taking one?
Bobby.
Okay. It's a variance appeal?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. On January 12th, 2021, the Planning Commission voted four to one to deny a variance request to allow 264 square foot video board at 110 Athletes Road. The video board was to be utilized in conjunction with outdoor worship services conducted in the parking lot to allow for safe worship in an outdoor setting during the COVID-19 pandemic. The applicant's argument to the Planning Commission was that the COVID-19 pandemic constitutes a hardship as provided in the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission concluded that the applicant failed to prove a hardship existed due to the COVID-19 pandemic and denied the variance request. Following the denial, the applicant submitted an appeal request to the city council stating that the Planning Commission made an error in their decision. The city attorney will now discuss the appeal process with you.
Thank you. First matter, because this matter is a quasi judicial appeal, I'd like each member of the council to divulge if they've had any ex parte communications with the applicant.
Absolutely.
I have.
I have.
I have.
Yes.
The answer is yes, across the board.
Yes, across the board.
And I mean, when you say in a communication, in reference to this particular matter?
Yes, in reference to this matter, that you discussed this matter with the applicant.
No.
And all you have to do is just disclose that you've had such a communication. This is an appeal from a decision of the Planning Commission. Under the Land Development Code, the city council has appellate jurisdiction over the decisions of the Planning Commission. What that means is you will be examining their decision. The items are limited to the record that was presented before the Planning Commission. This is not an opportunity for the applicant to relitigate the case or to bring in new evidence or new arguments that were not raised before the Planning Commission. The decision on your part is whether or not the Planning Commission's decision to deny the variance is based on competent substantial evidence. Easiest way to define competent substantial evidence is that it is evidence a reasonable mind would accept to support a conclusion. So therefore, if you believe, based on the evidence presented in the staff report, that the decision of the Planning Commission to deny the variance was based on the evidence presented before it, your decision is to affirm the Planning Commission's decision. If the applicant brings forth argument that the Planning Commission's decision was not based on and not supported by competent substantial evidence presented before it, then your decision would be to, you can either deny the, I'm sorry, you can either overrule the decision of the Planning Commission. A third option is you do have the authority to remand, to send the matter back to the Planning Commission with instructions to review the application based on certain evidence. So those are your three options. So the testimony and presentation basis today is to be limited to what was presented on the record, and then your decision is to not, you are not to step in the shoes of the Planning Commission or substitute your judgment for theirs, but whether the evidence that was presented before them, did that evidence support the conclusion that they raised, which was that this variance was, that the application was not supported by the standards under the Land Development Code for the issuance of a variance, and that the evidence did not support such a variance being granted.
Wow, that was a mouthful.
Any questions?
But I'm sure as we go along, you'll be there.
I'm here to answer questions.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm here to answer legal questions.
Okay.
I'm sure if we go sideways on our commentary, you will course correct.
I will advise and counsel accordingly.
Thank you. Jonathan? All right, well, good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Jonathan Huels. I am with the Lounes Law Firm at 215 North Eola Drive, Orlando, and I'm here on behalf of the Patmos Chapel. And in attendance with me as well is the lead pastor of Patmos Chapel, James Doggett, and there are also members of the congregation that are here in support of this appeal request. What is before you today is what was presented to the Planning Commission, which is a request for a variance to utilize an existing outdoor video board that has been installed at the church facility and has remained dormant since its installation. Just by way of background, and I have a couple of slides to share with you just to frame the issues that is before you, and as was mentioned, really what we're asking you to find is that there was, in fact, a undue hardship presented is the basis of need for the video board, and that undue hardship is what's around us since late last, or early last year, and it's the pandemic. And the pandemic has caused, you know, life to change for all of us, none so more dramatically than when it comes to organizing and worship. So let me just frame the property so everyone's familiar with it. It's located in the Cooper Palms Sports Complex, formerly known as that. It's now the Patmos Chapel, or also known as The Well. This just shows the general vicinity of the property being located east of Bradshaw and south of 441. If you zoom in a little closer, the overall property is six acres in size. The actual facility is right around 1,000 square feet, and the parking lot that has the directional arrows on it is the parking lot where the church is currently conducting an outdoor worship. And it's all safely done outside, all of the congregation stays in their cars, there is no projected sound because there is a low-frequency FM station that the participants can tune into and listen and really enjoy receiving the message. As you could see, this just shows the actual size of the parking lot, and it's a little less than two acres when you do the math. Here's a picture of the video board. As I mentioned before, the church started conducting outdoor worship last year in an effort to keep their congregation engaged, to allow their congregation to safely worship. And they went and said, you know, how can we make this, enhance this experience for our congregation? And they went and started looking around, and they said, well, having a video board that could project the speakers that are at the front of the parking lot, because it's oftentimes difficult, there's no grade there for folks parked in the back to really see what's going on towards the front, and also to utilize a board to potentially share messages from those that could not be there, but could potentially, you know, be projected and deliver a message remotely. So they went and, as I said, they went and looked around, they found a company in the Midwest that specializes in video boards, and they signed a contract, they paid tens of thousands of dollars, and they hired a recommended contractor, and the contractor went and put up the video board. And only after did they realize that the contractor didn't do what he was supposed to do, and he didn't pull a building permit, which is required because it is an add-on to the structure, and it did require a building permit. And that was when the church was informed, that contractor corrected that issue and went to go get an after-the-fact permit, and was told that that permit would not be processed or issued because the video board is going to be regulated by the city as a sign, and that it exceeds the criteria for the largest signs that are permitted under the city's Land Development Code by 64 square feet. So the video board's 22 by 12, which if you measure that out is 264 square feet. Why 264 square feet, it's really driven by the aspect ratio. 22 by 12 allows for one of the, it's one of several different aspect ratios that allows for the full use of the screen in projecting videos. And so they were left to go through this process. So the video board hasn't been operated since it was erected last year, and the church has asked me to help assist them with processing this application. Just to give some perspective of what the view shed is for this video board, the picture on the left is looking east, so it's actually taken from above the video board where that portico chair is, and it's looking out towards the parking lot. The picture on the right is looking back the other direction, so towards the west, and the video board is right in this location. You can see the police cars, kind of, the police cruisers, kind of the point of reference here. These photos show a viewpoint looking north from, so this is actually from the south side of the parking lot, and the video board is located here, and this is a viewpoint looking south, so taken from the north of the parking lot here. And finally, this is on the eastern side of the property, of the actual, the Cooper Palms complex, and it is taken from Hawthorne Avenue in Cooper Palms. It just shows how far away that, it's really hard to see here, and I apologize, if it was a little lower light, you could see, but the video board is actually stuck here behind these palm trees. So in terms of mass and scale of the overall building, which is quite enormous, it's 50 feet tall and 330 feet wide, the massing is, it does not dominate, you know, as an architectural feature, and really was picked to try to. feature, and really was picked to try to give the most optimal view to that parking lot view shed. So we, you know, we believe that the Planning Commission really made a wrong finding, and we believe that there is ample support in the staff report, coupled with our application, which is made of record and is incorporated in that staff report with a justification statement that there is an undue hardship here. I do have a closing slide I will utilize, but first I wanted to give Pastor Doggett an opportunity to come up and just talk a little bit more about the outdoor worship that they've been conducting out there, and what a success it's been for his congregation and how it's kept them engaged in a time where it's been very difficult to get groups together and organize and stay connected. And then I'll just have some closing remarks after that, so thank you.
And attorney, this Pastor Doggett comes up. Maybe I misunderstood your questioning at the beginning. We asked if we had, in conversation, and my conversation was in reference to Pastor Doggett. I had not, but I had spoken to his representative, so just want to make that clarification.
Okay, that's fine.
James Doggett, pastor of the Patmos Chapel Seventh Amendment Church, Mayor Nelson, and distinguished commissioners, I am proud to represent Patmos Chapel and The Well Activity Center. We moved from Winter Park, Florida, to the Apopka area when we purchased the facility that you just saw, and we actually moved in there towards the beginning of 2020. We gave ourselves a self-imposed mandate that we did not want to take resources from the community, but that when we came, we wanted to bless the community and partner with churches and organizations that desire to help those in need, and we immediately stepped in to do that. We found a house in South Apopka where there was a dilapidated kitchen, and we put in a new floor, new cabinets, new counters, new appliances. It is a first-class kitchen now at no expense to the persons who needed it. It was a family who was in need, and that's all we want to do is meet needs. We also partnered with Second Harvest, and we've given out thousands of pounds, tens of thousands of pounds of food to people who are in need on a regular basis. We also partner with the leadership over at Taylor Apartments to provide whatever it is they need there, and we're looking for people to partner with just to help folks. In addition to that, every morning at 7:30, our first employee comes in and opens up the building. So that at 8 o'clock, when Orange County Schools has its program where students who have been suspended come to be tutored and don't fall behind in school, they come, and we facilitate that. We also facilitate some 23 to 25 organizations that use our facility, and individuals who come to do basketball activities, volleyball, martial arts, gymnastics, what else? Soccer, indoor soccer, you name it, we have it over there, and we leave it available for the community to use. One of the things, though, that has been a big blessing to us is, again, we moved in at the beginning of 2020, and that's when COVID really hit bad. I've actually had two transplants and have to be very careful that I don't expose myself to things that would leave me in great peril, and we have members who are the same way. And so we had to find a way to keep our congregation together without exposing them to the dangers of COVID. So what we did is we immediately began to have drive-in service where we used, as the attorney said, low-frequency FM signal so that people can drive into the parking lot, face our building, and listen to the service on radio, but watch it with their own eyes. We stand there at the landing between Level 1 and 2, and we talk down on the floor, on the ground level. There's singing, there is music that is played, and we do this every Saturday. It's a safe way to go about it, and we don't know when it's going to be safe to go back into a building en masse. Our congregation has some size to it, so if we were to go inside, it would be very difficult to distance. We are blessed with that service because that's what's held our congregation together for so long. And it's also where we get energized and get our directives and energy to go back out into the community, to bless the community at large. I have some members here, faithful members who attend on a regular basis, who, if allowed, would like to speak to how important it is to them, this drive-in service. The screen that you've seen, we certainly didn't try to get around any of the laws or rules of this community, but we hired a company out of Iowa, and we discovered a little late that it was up and there was some kind of a problem, and we're trying to solve it now. Those who park on the back row find it very difficult to see what's happening up front, thus the screen. I want to thank you for considering what our attorney has shared and what I've shared and perhaps what some of the members will share, and we hope that we'll be able to continue to be a big part of the city of Apopka. Anything we can do to bless, we want to, but we definitely want to hold our congregation together and service them during this time of COVID. Thank you very much.
Okay, before we get the congregation members, any questions for either the attorney for Pastor Doggett?
Yeah, my question would just be if you could factually just kind of talk through what's displayed on the video board? That would be helpful. Yeah, just, so I guess what's proposed because it's not being used today? Well, he could, sure.
Can I say this in answer to you? We are expecting to hear from, every year we do the Chaplain of the United States Senate, Chaplain Barry Black. He can't travel right now. He's staying in Washington. He is, in fact, the pastor of the United States Senate, and he wants to stay nearby because there's a lot of activity, and he chooses not to travel. But as soon as we're able, we intend to have him on the board addressing us. The number one motivational speaker in America, Eric Thomas, has made a commitment to address especially our youth. We need a screen to be able to pull that off as well. So we're limited right now, and also those who come in to the service and are on the back rows, it's very difficult for them to see anything.
Yeah, and thank you for explaining some of the background of the ministry and stuff. I think the attorney would probably counsel me to stick to the facts at hand on this particular piece of, I mean, it's nice to know that for sure. I just want, factually on this piece of it, I just wanted to understand specifically what's intended to be on that screen on a go-forward basis. So, yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, Commissioner Velasquez, any, you have a question?
Right now, since they're not using the screen, where is he, where is he standing in that location right now? It's just a step, it's just a small step?
Basically, it's a fire escape.
So that's where he is standing? Is there anyone else that's up there with him? Because he says that he has.
Yes, and once it got, and correct me if I'm wrong, I might know enough to be dangerous here, and you can correct me. Then there's other members that are participating. The band will be, sometimes there's a band, sometimes there are singers. They'll be under the portico chair, try to use a little bit of that shade.
To the right.
To the right. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then whoever's the speaker would take the makeshift podium up on the landing.
Okay. All right. I think I did ask you the question, and I'm going to say, what was their investment in the screen? Can I ask that question?
You can ask the questions, I mean, but at the end, your decision is going to be based on what is the present, but you may ask all the questions you wish.
Okay, so I did ask you that, and you wasn't sure. So what was their investment in that screen?
Yeah. So it was a considerable amount. It was close to $70,000 for the video board. Now, I just want to wrap up with these points, and then happy to answer your questions, and then if there are people from the public, you know, we'll give them that opportunity to come up. So just as a wrap-up, where I showed you with the aerial maps, you know, we believe all of the criteria, as set forth really in the staff report and our materials that have been supported, there's competent substantial evidence of the record already for this council to approve this request and for this council to specifically find that there is an undue hardship presented by the pandemic that is the basis for this variance request. But just to wrap up, the area is surrounded by industrial warehousing and really heavily vegetative railroad right-of-way, so in terms of compatibility of the intended use, which is in support of the day outdoor worship, there is no issue with some type of spillover effect or impact on the surrounding neighboring properties. As I said before, you know, the size and dimensions are really picked and geared towards just having the right aspect ratio and the size to adequately provide a video board that could be seen from a two-acre parking field. As we said before, you know, and as Pastor Doggett had commented on, you know, the whole basis of this is to further enhance what has really been a success story in utilizing, the church utilizing its facilities to be able to safely conduct worship in the time of this pandemic. You know, it's our belief that this is an absolutely innovative measure that is protective of, you know, public health, safety, welfare, and also absolutely encourages the congregation to stay engaged. Some of the proposed conditions, and these were presented to the Planning Commission as well, there's nothing new here. There will be no actual signage or advertising, so even though it's a little tricky and that the city staff has determined they would like to regulate this as a sign, there will be no signage, and we can commit to that, and would be voluntarily place that condition, and we would put it on this approval. There would be no amplified sound with use of the video board. As we mentioned before, the church is already utilizing a low-frequency FM station. They would continue to do that anytime the board was utilized. And we are committed and for the purposes of this variance, make it very narrow in scope, and that would be that the video board's only use by rights, if it was to be approved by this council, would be during the Saturday worship service that's currently being conducted outside. We would provide that there is another process to go through if there wanted to be a special event to use the video board, and that would be the city's special use permit process that goes through DRC and is ultimately. Jim, is that put on consent agenda for approval, or is that ultimately? Yeah, just DRC for vetting and ultimate approval. And the thought process here is that, you know, maybe there are other ways this video board could be utilized in the future in a very limited manner, a very controlled manner, and with the city's approvals, that we're not thinking of today. But, you know, because we are coming to you in this posture, you know, that it is an after-the-fact request, and we know that, we're willing to put these very limited conditions. I don't think the church ever thought that these conditions were going to be placed on it when it originally made this investment, but in terms of the posture that we're in today, the church is prepared to accept an approval if it was, you know, the determination of the city council with these conditions in place. So like I said before, I really think there is, what's already of record, adequate evidence that there is an undue hardship that's really driving behind what this request before you. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, it's more just the facts that we've been presenting thus far, you know, because my study of the issue here is I think there's good intent on all parties, staff, the Planning Commission, applicant, obviously this council, hopefully will have good intent here. But where I always kind of gravitate towards is the facts at hand, right? I mean, it's similar to what we discussed in the workshop earlier, all good intent about the operations of the ministry and all that sort of thing, but it's really, with this being a quasi judicial and our guardrails very narrow, it's all the facts at hand. Where I center in on is when you look at our code and the interpretation from staff of saying it is a sign, if you look at our code, there is no definition of sign for someone to be definitive to say this is a sign definitionally. And in fact, in all the reference to the subject within the staff or within the minutes, it's always referred to as video board. And the reason why I asked you about the content that you would have on this was to dictate if there was some sort of content that you would have on there to indicate that it would be a sign, as most people would assume a sign to be. And from the testimony I've heard thus far, it would be just a video portrayal of either the services that are happening in front for the purposes of people in the parking lot, or, you know, remote feed of the same kind of setup. And so absent of a, if someone can show it to me, a connection between sign definition and the lack of definition around video board and within our current code, there's merit into was the Planning Commission reacting to the proper considerations when it was presented as a sign during their determination? And that's where I find some challenge there. So I'm looking at our attorney because what I'm trying to gather is, from our action tonight, are we, is the only action of whether or not to deny or send back to Planning Commission, or do we have anything in terms of council that there's a third option?
Now, you either affirm the decision, you overrule the decision, and that your decision to overrule it has to be based that you believe that the evidence presented by the applicant is competent substantial evidence to support a finding that they've met all the standards for a variance, or you can remand it back to Planning Council, Planning Commission to examine it under these aspects. I think the key is, the issue that's really presented that's before you tonight is the Planning Commission's decision was that the applicant did not present competent substantial evidence to support what is the required finding under Section 2.5.5A B1 of the Land Development Code, which is there are practically, and the code reads, well, B is, "A zoning variance shall be approved only on a finding the applicant demonstrates there is competent substantial evidence in the record that," and the first one, "there are practical difficulties in carrying out the strict letter of the relevant requirements of the LDC, of the Land Development Code, in that the requested variance relates to a hardship due to characteristics of the land and not solely the needs of the land owner."
And I don't dispute their interpretation of that language. What I would dispute is the idea that it was presented as a variance to the sign ordinance or sign code, meaning in the absence of saying that this thing that we're talking about is a sign or not a sign, if it's a video board and we do not have any code documented within our Land Development Code or ordinances around that, and the absence of clearly defined code is a misinterpretation. That's the point that I'm arguing.
Well, usually if the use is not explicitly provided for in a land development code and a zoning code, that use is prohibited. Zoning codes are of exclusion, so what I believe the staff did was to try to find the equivalency of what the closest equivalent to this use that they're seeking a variance for, which was to be a sign. And the issue presented was the variance that they're seeking isn't for the sign per se, but that the square footage of the sign went above the maximum square footage for an allowable sign under the Land Development Code. So the variance is for the 64 extra square feet that this video board is, in a way to try to, the applicant made the, tried to compare this to a sign and therefore seek a variance to the sign code based on the overall square footage of the sign. If we treat it as a video board or a, for lack of a better term, a Jumbotron without a scoreboard, that's not an express permitted use under our Land Development Code, and then therefore, any type of Jumbotron excess-sized video screen for the purposes of displaying productions is not in the Land Development Code and therefore is not permitted under the code. And under that rationale, you cannot seek a variance for that which is not permitted. A variance allows you to have a permitted use on your property, but that there is extenuating circumstances on your property. The easiest example is you have an oddly shaped lot that doesn't allow you to meet the same setback requirements of the other similarly situated lots around you, and therefore you seek to have some modifications so that you can exercise the same. you seek to have some modifications so that you can exercise the same property rights as other similarly situated property owners. In this case, the decision of the planning commission was based on that the hardship that they're providing is not a hardship that's uniquely or related to a land characteristic, but is a external environmental hardship that affects every property owner in the city. And by granting such a variance legally, when you're looking at, if permitting the use of COVID as a hardship for the granting of a variance, you could be opening the door to other requests, practically speaking. I run a barber shop, I'm not allowed to have folks, you know, and when we had that issue and you couldn't congregate, can someone then theoretically seek a variance to the code stating, well, I want to operate my barber shop at my house, COVID's my hardship, I can't go to my spot, but I can bring people one at a time to my home. And that's where we have the disconnect, where the hardship is tied to the land and not necessarily an overall environmental hardship. And those are the issues that were presented before the planning commission, and those are the issues the planning commission tackled in then rendering their decision that while the evidence that was presented mainly that COVID is the hardship, that wasn't competent substantial evidence to support that they met the first criteria under the required findings of the code to issue a variance.
So that was a very long explanation to say that if, even if everybody called it a video board in terms of our Land Development Code, the absence of that specifically or explicitly stated within the code causes what action? To look for equivalency or to say it's not a permitted use and that's right there and then it's a variance to begin with? Because it's not in our code?
The video board was treated as a sign, and therefore, if it's going to be treated as a sign, it must meet the dimensional requirements of a sign under the code.
Yeah, and I guess that's the point that I'm arguing, right? Why was it treated as a sign? Maybe that's a staff, kind of a logic as to why it was treated as a sign.
As the attorney mentioned, staff is working for a way to allow something like this to occur because it was up already. And as the attorney mentioned, as Michael mentioned, if it's not looked at as a sign, we don't have a video board as a permitted use, which means it would not be allowed in the first place. It would have to come down. So by allowing it to go as a variance for the square footage, it at least had a chance to keep going. We're trying to work with them. Otherwise, it has to come down. We don't have a use for it. There's not that use there, it's not a permitted use.
I mean...
It does convey a message, correct? Does it convey a message? If somebody's up there talking, whether it's a moving object or a stagnant sign, we also have other signs...
Verbal message, correct?
Verbal message. That's the definition of a sign, it conveys a message.
Where in our code does it define that, though? That's all, what I'm trying to do is just anchor back to where we specifically say this meets the criteria of a sign. That's all I'm asking. What piece of our code does it say that?
I don't have the definition for the sign up here right now, but that's...
Well, I mean, that's the testimony that I'm asking for.
Give me a minute, let me find the definition of a sign. Again, if it's...
But I think with that, we're going to open up Pandora's Box. If we say the video board's not a sign, then everybody can put up a video board. So I think we got to be careful.
Well, long term, I mean, we should probably have a policy in place to, if there's video board, let's, you know, every time that there's a new thing that is presented that we haven't contemplated, it's a cause for us to have a conversation to say, should we build policy around video boards now? Or, because this doesn't meet, for my purposes, it doesn't meet the sign, what a sign stands for. You're re-displaying live action up on a video board.
Well, we do allow monument signs, 50% can be a, for all practical purposes, a video board. You've seen the changeable copies of signs, and they have, you know, people walking, they have a message, they have the time, they have the date, they have whether snow's coming. So the way I was looking at this is in order to keep this going, it's similar to that type of a message board.
What do you consider the sign that we have right here outside of City Hall? That's the rotaries.
The rotary?
Yeah.
That's a monument sign, but 50% is allowed to be movable. Motion, you know, where you can see a message being projected, you know, whether or not it's something occurring at Kitland Nelson Park, or if there's an event going on, something like that. It's, that is, it is a sign.
Michael, question for you, trying to, like Jim, trying to get the yes and if I can. One of the things I discussed with the pastor is, could we give them, not give them the authority to do it, but give them a two-year grace period?
Well, the issue is that if you do in turn grant the variance, the variance runs with the land.
I'm not going to give them a variance.
Well, what was one of the items that was contemplated before the planning commission, since the issue that they're seeking the variances for the extra 64 square feet, if that video board is reduced by 64 square feet, then it would come in, then planning, the staff would process it as a sign. The variance isn't for the video board alone per se. The variance is that the video board exceeds the minimum, the maximum square footage allowable under the code. So they're seeking a variance to go bigger than what the code provides. If it's reduced, if theoretically, if the item would, if the request would have come in at the maximum square footage permissible for a sign, staff would have processed it as a sign application, and they would have moved forward, and it would have never been presented to the planning commission for a variance. The variance isn't the sign, the variance is the size of the sign. And they're seeking a hardship claiming COVID as their hardship to justify the excess in the size of the sign that would be permissible under the code, not the sign in and of itself.
So in a way, we can just do a two-year, because we're not giving them a variance. If we don't, we just, there's not a way to craft something that we just say, you've got two years to take it down, that we know you're out of compliance, and then by that time, COVID's over and...
I don't think this council has the authority to extend that. That would be the case, if practically speaking, the item, the appeal is, if the decision is affirmed, the matter gets related back to code enforcement. Code enforcement can in theory initiate an enforcement action and then determine the time for compliance. However, the item is still not consistent with the language in our Land Development Code, and the council does not have the authority to do a temporary waiver of the Land Development Code for certain items. I mean, the code reads that the mechanism to go forward is a variance. However, the planning commission found that their request for this variance is, the evidence that they presented does not support justification for variance under our Land Development Code.
I do have a sign definition. It's in our code. Any writing, pictorial presentation, number...
Can you point to, what section are you reading from?
It's Article 10.
Section 5.10 or Article 10?
Article 10. Definitions.
Okay.
Any writing, pictorial presentation, number, illustration or decoration, flag, banner, or pennant, or other device which is used to announce, direct attention to, identify, advertise, or otherwise make anything known. The term sign shall not be deemed to include the terms building or landscaping, or any architectural embellishment of a building not intended to communicate information. It's a very broad definition.
Attorney, let me ask the question. They have presented some conditions for the use of the board. Should this variance be granted? Does this commission have the authority to grant the variance with these conditions? And I was looking for it in this report, but somewhere I read that by granting this variance, they're not set a precedence for others to come to do the same thing. Is that not correct?
Correct. Variances are really considered on a one-time, it's only to apply to that property. So you're not creating precedent for any future variance applications. As for the issue of the conditions, I would advise the council, if you were to feel that way, to remand the matter back to the planning commission and have the discussion of the proprieties of the conditions, or whether those conditions are to be approved, done by the planning commission. Planning commission has the authority in the Land Development Code, they're the final say when it comes to variances, and I think that's the proper body to consider whether or not they wish to impose conditions if a variance is to be granted.
Mr. Hughes?
I would, if it was the pleasure of this board, I'd voluntarily place those conditions on this, and we could have it written into the record to put them on here. Voluntarily meaning I'm volunteering them, but it would be made a part of this, if it was the pleasure of the city council.
What conditions?
The ones, those last four bullets?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And my only drawback with the conditions is a time limit of 10 to 1. I thought dust to dawn was fine, but the limit to 10 to 1, I mean, what if, you know, the Holy Spirit got a hold to him and he went to 110?
The conditions that we had was under the staff report number seven, under staff response, it originally said the development review committee stated that the uses need to remain oriented towards worship. Viewing or showing of motion pictures, picture films is prohibited, renting of the video board will be prohibited, external speakers or system is prohibited, nighttime uses are also prohibited unless approved by the city's DRC. And then it also said, if other uses are to arise in the future, they must be presented and taken through a special event permit process. What I'd recommend is that where it says if other uses, I would say if these or other uses were to arise in the future, that they be presented as a special exception permit process which goes through DRC.
Yep. Were these conditions at, okay, so these have already gone through?
They were presented at planning commission, yep.
And they're still denied? Even with the conditions?
Correct.
Right. In order for this council to consider whether to imply the conditions, you would have to take still the first step, and that would be to make the determination that the planning commission's decision was incorrect, and that the applicant has provided competent substantial evidence to support the finding of the first standard for a variance, that there is a, sorry, I'm trying to get to the right language, that, because that's the, what the planning commission found was of the nine standards in which they are required to make a finding, the planning commission's decision was that the applicant did not provide evidence to support the practical difficulties in carrying out the strict letter of the code, in that the hardship was due to characteristics of the land. So if you believe that the applicant has presented evidence today that they do have a, they, there is a practical difficulty in carrying out the strict letter of the relevant requirements of the code, which are that this hardship is a, presents a difficulty for them to provide a sign that is consistent with the dimensional requirements for a sign, and that these are hardships that are due to the characteristics of the land. So that's the crux. That's the decision you will have to render, whether the planning commission was correct in stating, no, the increased square footage of the sign does not present, is not, the size of the sign is what, and COVID creates a practical difficulty, not the sign by itself. And if you then find that their evidence supports that finding, then you can move forward to the conditions. But you can't get to the conditions until you actually make that finding that the applicant has met all nine standards for the granting of a variance.
And they have to meet all nine?
Yes.
And let me re-center the undue hardship, because I think it's already of record, it was the same, this is the same presentation that was presented to the planning commission. If you look at it and you want to view it and the description, and it was a good description that Michael made, I mean, we're talking about a large parking field. It's two acres, it's 350 by, it's 335 feet by 250 feet. And the maximum video board that'd be allowed by right is 200 feet. We're talking about 64 more feet to make and have a video board that's an ample size to be able to service that view shed. And, you know, I think there's a number of ways you can get there, if you want to get there. And we can, this is a variance, it stands by itself, it's not, doesn't have a precedent value, it's not a zoning decision or a land use decision. And I think we can condition this in such a manner that it makes really no sense for anyone else to ever want to attempt this based on the costs and the limitations in use that are in the staff report and that we're willing to place on this request before you.
How many, since this is a flat surface, if someone is in the back of that property and without the use of video board projection, would they be able to see the people being presented underneath the overhang there?
I mean, if the parking field is full, absolutely not. I think you could be in the second row and potentially not be able to see.
So, but this congregation has full right to do outdoor services, is that correct?
It does today. It's gone through.
And would the hardship of being at the back of that parking field and not being able to see what's going on on this service so that they can experience the full dealings of that service, present a hardship?
I believe it does. I believe there's enough there to find. I think that's what was presented to the planning commission. I think it was already presented to you as part of the, as a basis of need for the video board earlier, and I'll say it again. I mean, it is, there's no grade there. It's not built as a stadium, it's not built as a traditional, you know, church that has grades so that the road behind you is higher than your row, and the row behind that is higher. So it allows for, you know, what the intended use is.
Mr. Beckson, you got any?
Again, it's like ADA compliance, we facilitate things for those who, whose ability to partake is limited. And it seems that, just as you just described, there is a limitation of the ability for people at the back to be able to experience that service as people at the front if you don't have something to project that. You know, we're caught on our own code at this point, and I don't think there's anybody who sees this as a problem and issue. This is something that I think is a great service. So to me, we're trying to find a way, how do we get to that point? I don't know, let me ask this question, the 185 to 1 ratio, does that limit the size of what's being projected, such as like a theater setting, many times the picture is lessened? Is that happening and does that get us to that same standard as far as what's projected square footage wise?
Right. Well, that was the ratio that was recommended by the experts, which is the sign, the video board company that was out in the Midwest Iowa, I believe.
And so that actually brings it down to within the standard of the square footage?
Well, I can't say that for sure. No, I can't put on the record here with any certainty that, you know, what will, I believe the size and the ratio dictated, they had the view shed, and they said, this is, this gives you a board that can be seen by all spaces in the parking lot. And that's, that truly was the tail wagging the dog, and that's why they went with that size, that's why they purchased that size, that's why they paid for a contractor to put it up. It's only after that they found out that it was, you know, that it became the 64 square foot question that is before you.
And as you said, because the shape of those things, the shape, it's not, you know, tiered to be able to facilitate it to be able to be seen. So I think in that sense, it creates a hardship for a congregation to be able to serve the people in that same aspect. And, you know, to Commissioner Becker's point, I struggle with the issue of calling it a sign, but I understand we're trying to find a way to fit this because if we don't have something to describe it, it's already excluded. So to call it that is to try and find a way to get the foot in the door. But again, the nature of a sign is, it's not just, you know, a picture of the church and pastor and advertisement in that sense, it's just simply reproducing, Commissioner Becker is so well with his words, but reproducing what is alive... Becker is so well with his words, but reproducing what is alive, you know, service that's going on. So this is facilitating the help for the people to see it all the way to the back without that they're hindered, especially when you're in a vehicle, you know, it limits that already. And the fact that it doesn't create a problem with the community around it, I think a variance in this place can work where it might not in another place, if we can get to that bar. And I don't, I don't see why we can't.
Can I say ditto, 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 ditto? And I mean, that's what I'm struggling with, is that its purpose is, is to serve his congregation, and we're really stuck on this 200 square foot, and it's really the sign that we're dealing with, we're not dealing with what it's supposed to be doing. So I'm kind of, help us to try and get somewhere where we don't just disallow it completely. And so I'm asking you, I mean, how do we do it? It's the third choice, sending it back to P&amp;Z, to Planning and Zoning, and they're the only ones that can provide the variance?
You can give them direction to consider. My job is to counsel you on what's, what the language, the wording of the law is, and the decision of the planning commission. If you, my counsel is, and on behalf of staff, the planning commission found that they didn't meet the first standard, which is that there's no hardship due to the characteristics of the land, and I think the planning commission's decision was this was something that's solely trying to benefit the needs of the landowner, which is to provide this larger sign so that they can expand their use of the property, not just to the inside, but to expand it out to the outside. So, if you do believe, and I cannot tell you how to vote, my, I can only counsel you on this is what the law reads, but if you believe that the applicant has persuaded you that he has presented competent substantial evidence to support the finding, that they meet the required findings of the first one, be one, then your decision can be to reverse the decision of the planning commission, and state they meet all nine, and therefore a variance can be granted. The code does allow you to modify the decision of the planning commission, so if you do find that the applicant has presented the evidence to support, to reverse the decision, you do have the authority, confirm, you do have the authority to modify the decision of the planning commission. So if you do wish to then impose the conditions that were originally requested by staff, then your finding would be to reverse and include the conditions that were presented before the planning commission that they did consider. So you do have the authority to modify.
And they would still have to go back to planning commission?
No, you have, you can modify, so they would, you would make, you would render that decision, that you hereby modify the decision, it's reversed, and you would then impose the, what was the recommended action on the part of the staff to include those conditions, and the variance would be granted as requested. But you would need to make a finding that, that there is competent substantial evidence to support the first item, which is the only one that the planning commission found was not supported by the evidence.
And I do believe, because of the elevation, being flat, it does meet that bar, because it does create a hardship for the people to be able to be aptly ministered to.
For me, I see the hardship that they can't use the inside of their own building because of the restrictions. So how does that work with the land? Isn't the building part of the land? There's a hardship because he can't bring them inside.
In terms of a variance legally, you're looking, you're...
Isn't the building part of the land?
But there's no unique characteristics to this building that would, that would preclude... The bottom line is that what they're claiming is the hardship is COVID, because they cannot put the number of people they wish to put within the building in order, and comply with any type of social distancing. The problem is that that hardship is temporary, even though it feels like this pandemic has been going on forever, it's temporary. So therefore, it's not a hardship that's actually tied to the land. A true hardship that is, that is due to the characteristics of the land is, you can't change it. If you have a corner lot on a lakeshore, your lot is below any standards to be able to meet setbacks. You can't meet a 25-foot side yard setback because you're in an oddly shaped lot that geologically does not permit it. There is nothing that that can, that can change, and therefore, that is a true hardship, that you need a variance from the code in order to be able to build a home. In this case, the hardship is temporary. COVID is a temporary hardship, because theoretically, come December, this hardship no longer exists on the land. It's, it's gone. And yet, that, so that's when it's, I will commend counsel for the unique and novel argument that the pandemic constitutes a hardship under, for variance purposes, but I mean, my advice to the council is that in terms of variances, when you're talking about a hardship, it's hardship really tied to the characteristics of the land, that there is something physically that is part of the land that is restricting you from actually abiding by the strict and literal interpretations of the land development code. In this case, it's COVID, and while this is not, it doesn't establish precedence, you're also thinking the number of future applicants that planning commission will have to consider, because anyone can claim there's a pandemic is hence a hardship, and now I want to be able to use my land in a different way, or not have to apply the land development code strictly because there's an external environmental factor that I deem to be a hardship. The language in the code is really strictly limited to a hardship due to the characteristics of the land, and that's the basis for the variance, and not a variance so that you don't have to follow the strict letter of the law, so that the, the needs of the landowner can be satisfied. And in this case, I think the planning commission took into consideration, we're not talking about a hardship to the land, but the owner is seeking to satisfy his needs by erecting a sign that doesn't meet the land development code's requirements for a sign in order to change his use from indoor to outdoor. And I also think as part of the presentation to the planning commission, and what's been presented to you here, there is evidence in the record that the configuration of this parking lot being wider than it is, deeper, but still being huge, two acres in size, that the side, the 64 square feet that's being sought as this variance, as part of this variance is needed in order for, to accommodate that view shed. And I think that is a unique feature of this property, it wasn't created by the owner, this parking lot was here when they bought it, and they're trying to utilize it to the best of their advantage to keep their church and their congregation engaged during these unprecedented times. And I believe that is, you know, a uniqueness, an undue hardship that could, you find tonight, and you could utilize to find that criteria met and support approval of this very limited use variance.
And I heard you say that COVID is going to be over in December, and that that's the reason why it's doing so, temporary use. Well, let's suppose that he decides that this is successful, and he wants to continue past December to continue to have worship outside on Sundays, well, Saturday, if we grant this variance. And so then, that being the case, then the land would be object, because it's all flat, and they would not be able to see the board. It's, if a sign company wanted to put up a sign and there was vegetation, and so the limitation was 25 feet, he needed to go 30 feet in order so the sign could be visible, and so he would need a variance to do that. So likewise, I think that this would fall into the same category, and then we'll...
Well, and that's where I was trying to get back to, if we based it on that when he goes back inside, the sign comes down, because it doesn't meet our 200 square foot code, then they could take the sign inside.
And Mayor, I think you get there with the conditions, because the conditions say the use is in conjunction with worship services. So if they go back inside, it's not going to be utilized. Everyone's going to be inside, God willing, we get through this soon. And so that, that gives that protection and limitation and assurance to city council that's going to be utilized for what it was intended, which is to really continue to have this congregation engaged. And if they're, if they're worshiping inside, then the video board's not going to be utilized.
Let me ask you one more question. Can, can you blacken the 64 feet around the edge to get it down to 200 square feet? Does that make?
I think if they could, they would have already, because the thing's been up for more. Yeah, no, I don't think the technology allows, I don't think they, I think it's a feed, it goes in, they don't have the ability to...
I didn't know if you could just...
Yeah, I hear you. We talked about that, and it wasn't feasible.
Is that one big screen, or is it in panels?
No, it's multi-panel, it's multi-panels, but it's not programmed or wired to act as independent panels, if that makes sense. There's one video feed, it gets spread out, and there's an algorithm that sends it over the size of the screen. We don't know of an ability to do that. If so, then they would have gone, permitted this, and been using it, and sought the variance potentially in the meantime, and then, but it's not possible.
Again, I'm going back to, based off your testimony, I'm going, I'm keying in on the topographical condition. The size of that parking lot, the distance from the back lot to that video board, I can get to where that's a reasonable reason for variance. Outside of rebutting fact of whether or not that 64 additional square feet is of benefit to somebody who's 20 yards closer or 20 feet closer, absent that testimony or that fact, that's where I stand. Now, if we want to work in conditions...
Well, it appears that the staff has already been working with them, they've already agreed to certain conditions that I think really make this feasible, and that is my exact contention, is I think it is worth giving a variance because of the topography. I think it's met that bar to me, and...
Could we add one more condition, that, that's that within two years it's taken down, or we have to re-up for a variance based, so if they're back inside in six months, or, then obviously they'd want to take it inside anyway, but it gives, if we get two years for the sign to be taken down...
Well, another thing to discuss is, like I said before, a policy conversation, now that's, I'm kind of sidebar-ing off of the issue at hand here, but like the city of Orlando has a 300 square foot max for their video screens, and there's designation between those types. So the question would then become is if, whatever the business is of today, if we set policy after the fact, would that get grandfathered in, or would it always be, you know?
Well, they would have, if a variance is granted, they'd have a variance that runs with the land. If in the, at a future date now, something is made that's been brought into compliance, let's say theoretically, I mean, I can't remember your exact square footage, but 264, okay, 264. Let's say in the future, assuming in arguendo, that we adopt a provision of land development code that allows for video screens, video movable type, kind of like, I'm picturing, as you're driving down I-4, the big movable sign on the side of the Amway Center, and the city permits those. I'm not going to go into where we would permit them, but let's say we permit them and they're 300 square feet. They have a variance on the property, however, they could then increase their signage to 300 square feet and be consistent with the code, that would be permissible. Because they would then be submitting an application consistent with the land development code.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would behoove us to contemplate a policy, because then, you know, granted, what we've said here is that what we decide on this individual case is not going to set precedence for others, because this is an individual case-by-case determination, but, you know, with the reality of other people might have a desire to do this, something similar, it would behoove us to have policy in place that addresses this unique need.
And what if it's not a church, though? I mean, I think we've got to, you know, we've got to look, are we doing it because it's COVID, and that, and that's fine, but is it, what if it's a business that, a restaurant that said, you know, my business has been hurt, now I want a 300 square foot sign? So that's the reason I like to put a time limit, I think it gives us some flexibility, or it puts, not flexibility, it puts an end date on it, if they want to come back.
Well, can it not be tied to the necessity of COVID? And when things are released, then...
Well, I think if you had a...
I don't think they want to stay outside and run their car with the air conditioning when they got it inside.
Right. No, I get, but I mean, I think if you put a two year, then you could, you could always come back, I mean, I mean, we all hope it'll be done in two years and come back, and if they wanted to add a year, because it's, we have it, a new strain or whatever comes on, that we could, they could come back and do it again.
Yeah, that's what I thought he said, we can't.
Right, I don't think you, you can have, you permit temporary variances. Variances are, they run with the land, so you can have certain conditions in order for use, but, but the variances, as far as this property is going to be concerned, they're going to be permitted to have a 264 square foot sign on the property.
So can this not be a special usage?
Well, it doesn't pull under...
Such as, let's say someone wanted to bring in a concert down at the amphitheater, and they brought in a Jumbotron and set it up, and it's affixed? I mean, can we not?
It's not permanent, though.
Well, if, if you have it...
Well, again, it's only permanent if you don't take it off.
Well, no, but if we were to, I think, and we had this discussion, if someone were to come in and put a video sign that's on temporary scaffolding, think you're having, let's say you have a music, say we have a music festival at the amphitheater, and we want to provide extra video, and we put temporary scaffolding, it's not affixed, and therefore the use is over, it's dismantled and taken away, that's, that's a different issue as to this sign, which is permanently affixed onto the structure. And I'll just, you know, put in, you know, once again, just remind, this is being tailored right now, that the only use by right is in conjunction with the outdoor worship service. So, once they go indoors, it's going to stay, you know, and maybe the church will be pushing a policy, a more global policy, but right now, they got a board up there that is dormant, and they really want to utilize it and, and, you know, be able to, to, hopefully only utilize it for a short period of time, but at least get something out of that investment. I mean, truly, and this, and we've worked with staff, and I think we've come up with some conditions to protect the city, and having the ability to go through the special use permit allows at least the possibility for other uses of the board, allows the possibility that maybe there's some ventures, maybe even possibly with the city, that, you know, the thing I could think of, but I'm not on the church board or in church leadership, is, hey, have a family movie night, you know, sponsored by the church, or sponsored by the city and the church, or sponsored by a couple of parties where, you know, you have something out there, but it would be very controlled, and I'm not suggesting that that is before you tonight, and that would have to be looked at, and maybe there's reasons why that would not be a good idea, but at least that's, that ability to seek these other alternative uses by a special use permit allows it. And, you know, I agree with you, Commissioner Becker, I, you know, COVID has kind of changed everything, and the city just went through this huge undertaking of updating its land development code, what, 2017, 2018? And 2019, sorry, feels like four years ago, when I was dealing with that transition, I had a couple of projects that were, you know, what side of the mountain are we on? But it just wasn't thought of, you know, I specifically looked at, when this issue first landed on me, I was like, I'm going to go find where they're regulating drive-in theaters. And there is no regulation, you know why? Because, you know, when's the last time a drive-in theater got, is built and approved? It just didn't happen, so the updating almost worked itself out of it. But now, due to COVID, things are changing, and it could be potentially something, policy setting, that could come in, in, you know, after the fact. I mean, I just think there's, there's enough in the, in the record, based between the staff report, which is favorable, and our, our application materials for this board to find, the criteria have been met, and I think it's very conditioned to be very specific and protective of this, the city's, you know, public safety, welfare, health.
Okay, yeah, so just kind of wrap everything up. So I have full respect for what the planning commission did, how they assessed this, the determination that they came to, that, however, again, during testimony here, I think there's the topographical condition that warrants the size of the sign, the sign, video board, whatever we're calling it, for this particular location. And really, I don't, you know, I don't know that I'm even putting time constraints on that, because we're going to run with a 64 square feet overance, if that's even a word, with the idea that we could potentially create another policy around video boards... with the idea that we could potentially create another policy around video boards that might surpass that long-term anyways. Because again, I mean, you could have Easter services, whatever the case might be, after this, after COVID. And COVID really should not be, to our attorney's point, not really a deciding factor here. It's the, it's the condition of the land that supports the larger video screen. And that's where I'm at. And if we want to condition that to talk about hours of use, type of use, I'm open.
Okay.
All right. I think we've.
Yeah, I think we've beat this.
The only thing is, with the limit of the hours, I would say allow the service to find its completion. If it's longer service, you can't say, sorry, God, we're done, you know? So I don't know if there's a better way to state that specifically, but.
Somewhere it said dusk to dawn.
I don't have the hours other than nighttime in here.
Okay, because I thought it said 10 to 1.
Yeah, it did, did.
That was our, kind of more for the condition.
We would rather go with the staff's condition. I think we were.
I agree.
Restricting. And I think the staff's condition achieves that.
Yeah, like I said, we've got the conditions in there. The only, the only thing that I would change is that the last, the last sentence to be read as these uses and other uses that are to arise in the future, you can come back as a special.
For special.
Okay.
There's flexibility built in.
And one other thing I did, I did want to mention, there are folks from the congregation that came out and I think we're preparing to speak, but I think in the sake of, in the sake, in the sake of time, I think just being in attendance shows enough that how important.
Looks like when you get to yes, you've got a.
Just want to record.
Yes. Well, thanks, thanks, thanks to the Congress for coming out. So if we're going to make a motion, we've got some, to, to appeal the variance denial. So what, how does the motion read?
You can move, let me get the right language from the code, because you are permitted to.
And we probably need to read into the record those four conditions and then we'll just, we're going to change to one condition. Mr. Hues.
Yeah, I think we're going to take it from the staff report. So let me grab that, sorry.
Let's read those into the record.
What you could, if you do so inclined to reverse decision, you can make a motion to reverse the decision of the Planning Commission, find that the applicant has submitted substantial competent evidence to support the finding that they've met the nine standards for the granting of a variance. And therefore, so if you want to just do, move as the lawyer said.
So move.
Hold on, wait, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet.
You're not done yet.
That's exactly what I was going to say. I move whatever he said.
And then that you will also, that the variance will be subject to the conditions presented by staff. That's, that's by staff.
And we've got the one change.
Amendment to the one condition.
Well, yeah, as presented by staff.
No.
Right. It doesn't have that other condition.
Didn't have the other condition, though.
Staff doesn't have the limitation. That limitation was presented by staff.
Okay, okay.
It's presented by staff. So what, that, you have the authority to do so. So you exercise your authority to reverse decision as well as modify the decision of the Planning Council. So you're reversing the decision. You have found, and because this is an appeal and it's a quasi judicial matter, you need to make a finding of fact that you have found that the applicant has submitted competent substantial evidence to support your decision to, to, they've presented evidence to support the findings, the, I'm getting tongue-tied. It's late. They've presented substantial evidence to support the nine standards for the granting of a variance and that you are, the variance is being granted subject to the conditions presented by staff.
So move.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries now.
All right.
All right. Resolution 2021-03. Michael, you got work cut out for you tonight.
Read the ordinance.
Yeah, you know, I didn't want to present this on the record, but today's my birthday and I kind of would rather be home, but I will proceed forward.
I just wanted to put on the record, it's my birthday, too.
Really?
Oh.
Wow.
I love spending days.
I know.
Well, happy birthday to the both of you.
It is. Oh, I can give you a whole list of the other famous people whose birthdays are today, too. Lou Diamond Phillips.
Today is my son's birthday. He's 41.
Oh. But yes, I keep getting texts from my friends saying, I hope you're doing something fun for your birthday. Like, no, I'm doing law talking guy things. Okay, this resolution we bring back, this is the resolution matter that was tabled from the February 3rd City Council meeting in relating to the social media policy. I did speak with most of you individually and the modification to the resolution is we've carved out and created section three within the resolution that creates a specific policy for elected official social media pages. Now, the practicality of the matter is, and this is something that's going to benefit the, benefit you, is that what will be done is that the city will create five social media pages for each seat and that the media, the social media page will belong to the seat. The city will create the site. However, once the site is created, it is handed off to each one of you individually to operate and run as you please. The only time you necessarily have to deal with IT is if you believe there is a content that was posted on your site that violates the terms of use. It could be addressed for the purposes of hiding the comment. The fact, the, with the media pages actually being operated and operated, not managed, operated by the city, it allows for ease of archiving in order to comply with Florida statutes. So practically speaking, once we create the pages, there'll come a time where you'll begin to migrate your content or your information from your current pages over to the city's pages. That's to your discretion how you want to notify folks. If you want to put something on your current pages, that would state, hey, the, my page will be moving here. Feel free to follow me here. Feel free to like. And then the other matter, and it was addressed in the policy, this will also facilitate at the time of elections, it'll really create a wall between your official page and your campaign pages, which will make it much easier for you to comply and be consistent with Florida's election laws when it comes to campaigning because you cannot do, you cannot campaign on the official pages. So this is something that is done, other jurisdictions have done in Florida. The current policy as modeled, is modeled, it's a hybrid model. Vero Beach's policy, the town of Jupiter, as well as Orange County does the same. They have, the county runs the social media. Now, it's your own prerogative. I know some of you have said you can only handle Facebook, but you, you can ask for more than one platform to be tied to your seat. So if any of you want your own Facebook page, that doesn't preclude you from also asking for a Twitter page or a Snap, well, I don't like Snapchat, but a YouTube page, you can ask for those. The city will provide the page. They will sit and administer it. It'll be, it'll be really operated by the city so that we can archive it, but it'll then be handed over to you. The language in the social media policy involving department directors and approvals, that will not apply to you. In essence, you are the department director for your page. You do have the authority to delegate any type of control or editorial to send to anybody else to run your page. You have final say when it comes to the content of your page. So I believe this will be a much efficient process to provide social, to allow you to provide social media in addition to the entire intent of the, of the policy, which is to provide an efficient mechanism for the city to run and operate its social media pages as well. It's the city's departments as well as the city's administration. So I believe that the, by creating this other carve-out, I've addressed your, your concerns and it'll make it much easier and much more efficient and probably a little more worry-free, as worry-free as social media can be for some of you to, in order to operate your pages. So with that, I ask for passage of the resolution to authorize the social media policy to take effect.
Okay. Motion approved.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to make comment, say thank you for making the revisions from the first one. Because, you know, the concerns that we, I think, I don't want to speak for others, I'll speak for myself. But, you know, just from a process standpoint, it seemed kind of weird because the language said to go to seek approval from a director, you know, and us as council. It just seemed weird. And so now all of this insulated into the section three and it's purely just the creation of it and then for the purposes of public record storage, we still, as elected officials, still have the latitude to post what we want to post. Assuming that it's not, you know, the belligerent type of content that you outlined within the policy. So I'm good with that. So thank you.
Right, right. The bottom, the simplest terms, the city will create your page, but you run it.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner.
NI second.
Okay, Commissioner Banksen, or Smith, Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries now. Okay, resolution 2021-06.
Resolution 21, 2021-06. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Russo and Sons LLC to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of waste in the City of Apopka, Florida pursuant to the City of Apopka Code of Ordinances, Chapter 58, Article 3, providing for the term of years for the franchise, providing for franchise fee, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Jeff? Jeff? That's you.
I'm sorry.
You're, you're, you're up.
It's your resolution.
It's your resolution.
It's a long night.
He's dreaming about scuba diving or something.
Thanks for joining us.
Let me pull this thing back up. I apologize.
That's okay.
I forgot this was even on there. Okay, we're asking that you adopt a resolution that will, basically, Chapter 38, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Apopka provides, to provide refuse collection services through the granting of a non-exclusive franchise for roll-off container collections in the city. The minimum amount of the city is to receive is $960 per, per year for this agreement. We're asking that you adopt resolution 2021-06.
Well, that's a great job there, Jeff. Appreciate that.
I'm going to go back and nap now. It's all right with you all?
Any questions for Jeff? All right. Anybody from the public which speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt resolution 2021-06. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries now.
All right.
All right. City Council reports. Mr. Becker, you want to start us out?
No, I was, you know, I always like to get the update around the HR director I saw on the Apopka Voice that I think Edward, we said maybe 30, 45 days that'll be posted?
Yes, that was the time.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, I have a resolution that I'd like to present.
Pass it down, please.
Oh, wow.
I got, I guess. Oh, Susan. Well, can we, we'd like to have this, can we bring this back next?
Well, when I talked to Mr. Bass, he said I could present it tonight, then you take time to look at it, then we vote it in the council meeting.
Right. What you can do, because it's being presented during your reports, you're presenting this for the council's consideration and whether then at this point, the council can direct whether this can be brought at a future date for approval.
Okay.
You good?
Good.
All right.
Anything else, Commissioner Smith?
Well, do I need to read it?
You can describe, you can summarize it, you can describe it. It's your time, but it.
Okay. Well, what the resolution basically is, is that it was on September 22nd, 1862, that President F. Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, announcing that on the first day of January in 1863, that all persons held as slaves within any state shall then be forever free. And despite the issuance of the Emancipation Proclamation, the news had not reached certain regions for more than two years later. It was on June 19th in 1865 that the news arrived in Gaverson, Texas. Therefore, June 19th, known as Juneteenth, is commonly recognized and celebrated as the day that slavery ended in the United States. However, it was on May 20th of 1865 that General Edward "Mike" Cook formally announced President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation from the steps of the Knox House in Tallahassee, ended slavery in the state of Florida, which is the reason I'm presenting this resolution tonight, asking the council to adopt at our next, to adopt this resolution, stating that May 20th would be the day that the City of Apopka will recognize as Emancipation Day. A similar resolution will be presented to the House by Representative McCarty and one would be submitted in the Senate by Senator Bracy in Tallahassee in reference to Emancipation Day in the state of Florida, being May 20th, since that's when it was announced on the Knox, the Knox Building in Tallahassee. And so I'm asking that the City of Apopka will adopt May 20th as Emancipation Day in the City of Apopka and that we support Senator Bracy and Senator, Representative McCarty's bill.
I'm sorry, who was the, you said Senator Bracy and, I'm sorry.
Senator Bracy in the Senate and Senator, Representative McCarty.
McCarty?
Yes, in the House. He was just selected.
Yeah, he took over for, yes.
Yeah, he ran for school board. Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, well, I appreciate that.
Yes, the person before him.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Banksen?
I'll tell you what, I'll just wait till next time. It's been a nice, long night. I would like to find a way, though. There's a tremendous article that I've read about drone technology and where it's heading. And I think it kind of folds into some of the information that's going on. But I don't know, I mean, I can't just email that to the other commissioners, but it's just.
Information.
Can I give it to you and you can?
Yeah, you can do that. You can send it to me and then we can.
Okay, because I just think it would help as we move forward in what's coming. So that's it.
Commissioner Velasquez?
I'm going to make it short and sweet. We were rained out on Saturday with the Boy Scouts, but Mr. Jeff Weatherford has promised them that he will bring them back. He started the landscaping, but he will bring them back because they were not as excited about the landscaping. They really wanted to see the garbage truck and they wanted to see all the other stuff. So thank you and we'll just find a date. And with that, we've had a long night and I'm hungry.
Edward?
I don't have much. Is that one thing that I need to say? The, as you, you'll recall, the airport bid that we put out for the sale of the airport, we had a date of February 19th at 4 o'clock to have the bids back. We've had a lot of interest. We've had a lot of people asking questions from fuel sales to taxes to environmental issues, everything, which is good. They're doing their due diligence. So what we have done is, I just wanted to make it clear so you would know, we have extended that date to March 5th at 4 o'clock to give them time since they've been getting, a lot of, they're still getting information. So that's one thing, I just wanted to let you know that that bid will be due March 5th at 4:00 PM.
Okay, all right. Michael, you got, you said enough tonight?
I'm, I have talked enough. Nothing to report.
Okay, all right. All right. Mayor's report. COVID numbers, you know, starting to drop pretty dramatically. Some good news about vaccination sites, you know, up until now, it's basically been, you know, at the convention center. Publix is now really ramping up. To let everybody know, we've got our Publix here on Rock Springs Road will be offering vaccines. Stony Brook, the one right there on the Orange County line will have them. Fountain West in Ocoee, that's the one right off the 429, will have them. In Seminole County, the Jamestown Publix, the Hunt Club Corners Publix, and the Springs Plaza Publix, all will have the vaccinations. Just got to, to go to their, the Publix website and they can, you can sign up for those vaccinations. You know, we. You know, we, we continue to try to, to offer up our services, you know, for the VFW and, uh, it's still been, you know, not given the, the green light to do it. Walmart also, the one on Princeton and the one on Lee Road also will have, uh, vaccinations. So that's the, uh, the COVID Camp WeWah. We had a great, uh, a great day, uh, Saturday. We had, gosh, 200, 300 people came out. Uh, we even had some people drive from Birmingham and, and amazing the amount of support. I mean, they were singing their camp songs and, and their chants and what a, what a great group of people out there to support Camp WeWah. I think between t-shirt sales and, uh, the sponsors and the, the magnets that raised over, and, and a GoFundMe account, they've raised over $20,000 to help in, um, the Camp WeWah support. Apopka Youth Works update, we've got, um, will go on, will goes, goes live next week as far as students being able to apply. So any Apopka area students that want to apply, it'll be coming up starting next week. Sometime in April, the chamber will pick up for the employer side. So, uh, it's coming together, uh, working hard to make that happen. So, yeah, so look, look for April businesses and you can, you can go onto our, our website or onto Career Source, uh, starting next week and we'll have applications for the, the youth, uh, here in the Apopka area.
Who's gonna be running it here in the City of Apopka?
Right now, it'll be Nicole.
Okay, Nicole.
The Apopka, um, the septic, the sewer, septic to distribute, distributed wastewater. Um, we are making a lot of progress, looking like we might have a kind of a, a first septic tank removal and replace with a distributed wastewater plant, uh, sometime in the middle of March. So we're looking forward to, uh, getting some, some systems in. I think we've come up with, uh, DEP was, was kind of hung up on drain field replacements, um, because the, a lot of systems didn't have the newer, not technology, the newer systems. And yet the ones that were still flowing, you know, should be fine as far as with the, the, uh, the new distributed sewer. So we think that they're gonna, they're gonna give us a waiver on that as long as it, 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 the wastewater can flow through the system, they'll, they'll approve those and so they'll, they'll save the, the homeowner about $4,000 replacing those, those drain fields. So, looks like we're, we're, we're ready to go and, and hopefully we'll have some in the ground before the end of April, so.
Mayor, are you gonna like doc, like document that? Cause I think that would be helpful to see it like in pictures to just to help educate as you're doing it. I think, it would interest me just to kind of see that whole process of extraction.
What we're hoping to do is, if, if we're gonna put the first system in on let's say a Tuesday, and we're looking for Friday, I think what we're looking for is Friday, March 19th, I think that, is that, is that a Friday?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay. Okay, so the 19th, what we're trying to do in, in the afternoon, we'll have one system already in the ground, you can see it. And they'll be digging the second one, cause we're gonna, we're gonna ask DEP to come down. Uh, Anne Shortell wants to come down, who's the head of St. John's Water Management. So we'll be putting in two systems that you'll be able to see them right there and, and obviously in Waciva Glen. So that's our hope is, so we'll, we'll keep you posted as to when we put them in the ground and so you can come out and kind of see what they really, what they look like. So, we're excited about that.
How many did you get?
What's that?
How many homes did you get in Waciva Glen?
Well, we've got, we've got more than we got money for, so we, we just gotta, we're, we're trying to see if there's some additional dollars we can get from, from Tallahassee to help. You know, I'd like to get all the ones that have, have applied. Uh, I think we've had about 30, Jeff?
They have about 30 people interested. They've actually investigated 13 so far, which is six work orders or task order approvals. And we're looking at three or four more coming in in this batch.
Yeah.
How many homes are in Waciva Glen?
Two 16. Two 18, yeah, yeah, okay.
So out of 280, only about 13 have said yes?
Have gone.
Okay.
That, they have a list, a waiting list actually, for people who may be interested, um, that in, they went out and they've actually talked to about 20 homeowners. And of those 20 homeowners, about seven of them had already dropped out and said, eh, I don't know that I want to do this. And we had the 13 that they took to the next level, where they went and actually did the inspection of the drain fields and such. Of those, they've sent me, um, task order approvals for the first six, which we've issued. That those will be the ones that they're hoping to begin in the middle of, um, March. That they've got, they're still waiting to hear back from, uh, four of the folks. And then they've got another three that they've just completed and they haven't heard back on those. So once we see that, we'll have a better idea. I think they have about 20 people that are on the list that are still interested. Should we, should we end up, uh, moving beyond or not get, basically right now, where we've got six, if everybody else drops out, they'll investigate some more. But other than that, with what we've got right now, we're actually, that if we get a funding change split with, um, as far as some, some changes to what St. John's was, um, putting in versus what we do, we'll be okay. But otherwise, we're slightly actually over where we had initially projected our expenditure, our portion of the, the cost would be.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll call it a night.